It is four o'clock, so I will call the meeting to order. Um, everyone on the board is present with the exception of Tim. We will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we will look for a motion in a second to approve the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Pat.
Thank you.
Second by Cass. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Um, only agenda topic we have is MSBA strategic planning, so Gary, I'll turn it back over to you.
Sounds good. My first question is, what is Cassidy thinking wearing shorts today? What the heck?
I came from practice, so...
Alright, alright. That's, that's a good excuse. Yeah. Alright, just getting everything put together here. Let me share my screen. Okay, so today we're going to work on mission statements. So let's just, you know, recap a little bit. We've talked about, uh, focus areas, you know, potential focus areas. We gathered that information from you guys. Uh, we've talked about core beliefs. Try and remember some of the things that you put together on that, along with, uh, belief statements. Now, do you, I hope you've retained all that information from your groups. And now what we're gonna do tonight is we're gonna take the next step in taking this information and defining our mission statement. I know one of the groups already put something in, in that survey, um, and I don't know which group that was.
Five.
Uh, but they...
Four.
Four.
Alright, okay.
Katie made it.
So we got a mission and a vision from them, but I want them to, to discuss it again, especially when we're gonna have different groups tonight. And, and the mission statement itself, it talks about today and what your purpose is. And it's gonna answer these questions. What result and for whom and why do we exist? Alright, this is, this is what's core to us. And you're gonna use those values and those belief statements to help develop this. And, and we want this to be really quick. Something that all the stakeholders will have at the tip of their tongue when someone asks about the Leroy Ostrander School District. Alright, and when we do this for MSBA, you know, what comes out when people ask, "What's your mission in life?" And it's to promote public, promote support and, no, I lost the last adjective or, eh, verb, uh, public school districts, alright, and school boards. But a lot of what we use is the word "support." That is the big one that we use. So it's, it's gotta be something clear and easy to understand, and it's gotta re, like I said, it's gotta reflect your beliefs, and it should be bold, not wimpy, alright? It should be, you know, there's a technical term for it, wimpy. Uh, but we could, we, it, it's gotta be something that really shows what you stand for. And, um, and so let's just look at some of the examples that are included in the presentation. You know, other people have used, "Investing in students so they succeed and excel in an ever-changing world." Hopefully you have copies of all this. Ensure that each learner will develop the skills and knowledge necessary to experience success and a personal fulfillment. To me, that seems a little bit long. Teach and inspire all students to excel in partnership with our community, to achieve educational excellence and to inspire a lifelong passion for learning. So just some examples. So what we want you to do now tonight is write a new mission statement. Like I said before, keep it short and concise, easy to say and remember. Uh, share your mission state, you know, we're gonna share it, um, you know, from, you know, amongst the three groups then. And we're gonna have you take a look or input that into the link, once we get the link, so we have it. You know, what's eventually gonna happen is all this information that we're collecting from you is gonna be shared back out with members of the committee so that they can, you can all vote on the ones that you like. And so that we bring it back then to the, in our last meeting saying, "This is what, uh, your committee has decided on." So, um, that's where, that's where we're going. You know, it looks like we, you know, I hope you're not getting, uh, anxious about where we're going with things. And it seems like we're just shooting at a cou, a lot of different topics, looking at a lot of different stuff, and how is this all gonna gel together? Well, it will. I can guarantee you it will. We just need to keep going through these steps, and then we'll pr, bring everything back together. And I, and I also gotta state, I can't tell you how many times in just this last few weeks that I've been working with different school districts. And, and just today, talking with one up in the, up in the range, where they're struggling to get everybody on the same page, and what they desperately need is a, is a strategic plan where everyone was involved, so we can start moving in the same direction. So, um, it's coming, guys. So why don't you break into your groups? And start working on a mission statement? And, uh, and then give me a heads up when you're done there, Teresa, so that we can call everyone back together again. The goal tonight is, I need to get out of here by 5:30 because I'm doing Phase One, uh, virtually tonight. I'm helping with the Phase One tonight, so, okay?
Alright, I'll read it off again. Group one, Deb, Dave, Kyle, Jen, I added you with them because Miranda's not here. So she'll join you. Group two is Teresa, Ashley, Carrie, and Cass. Group three is Pat, Erin, Dawn, and Chad.
And so we're not inputting back into the one from before? That was a one-time thing?
No, it's a, once you submit it, you can't do it again. So they'll have to get us a new link, so make sure everyone takes good notes. And when you submit, make sure you put in what group you are, so we know who is who's.
What you guys are saying. Let's start with one of the groups you guys pick. Let's start talking about what you got for mission. I'm getting a new link is being sent to me here really soon, and then we'll have you set input all this stuff again. So, which group wants to go first?
We'll go first. We're group two. Um, for mission, we have, "Give all students an education that allows them to reach their highest potential."
Thanks. Very good. Alright. Next one?
We have, um, group one, "Maximize each student's potential to achieve educational excellence for life."
Alright, another good one. Alright, last group, you got a high bar.
I know. We finished our homework last week.
We should just ride on that.
"Produce responsible, accountable, well-educated citizens capable of learning and applying academic and social skills in all aspects of life."
Alright.
Too wordy.
So do you guys wanna take a few minutes talking about the three different ones there? Or do you wanna just, uh, take those three and then we'll vote on them later on? Do you want to, uh, maybe sit and discuss some of the benefits or the pros of each one? And see if you come up with something else, like a fourth option?
We can. Is there a way we can s, uh, to kinda get the groups to be able to see?
Yeah, I can, I can, I can put them on a screen here. And let's take just a little bit to type them up. Give me a sec.
Cause group one and group two sounded a lot alike.
Yeah, I think so too. We had a lot of the same.
Okay, read, read, uh, group one's, or, yeah. Group one, give me yours first.
Okay. "Maximize each student's potential to achieve educational excellence for life."
Okay, "to achieve," what was the end there?
"Educational excellence for life."
Okay. Next group.
"Give students an education that allows them to reach their highest potential."
Okay, and, Erin.
I know, group three, you already have. Kate submitted theirs last week.
Do you have that, or let me tell you?
Oh, really? You got it from, uh, in the, in the...
They used the same one that you, the core value statement summary you sent me and Jen sent me there.
Give it to me again. Give it to me again.
"Produce responsible, accountable, well-educated citizens capable of learning and applying academic and social skills in all aspects of life."
Just stop, 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 stop. "Capable of learning..."
And... And...
And...
Applying academic, academic, and social skills in all aspects of life.
Yeah, yeah.
Make her go home.
Too many.
We were so smart. We just gave her so many adjectives.
Ours is like...
Exactly.
Yep.
Follow the board.
Well, ours is 12, so all your hours.
You guys are hours.
Fifteen more, Max.
Now we know.
You, you should really have technical difficulties in the audio.
Are you seeing this? Are you seeing it on the screen now, or what are you seeing on the s, oh, you're not seeing anything yet?
We see you.
Yeah, I forgot. I didn't, I quit sharing. Hang on a sec. Alright, so let me zoom into this. Are you seeing it?
Yep, yes.
Group one looks really good.
You guys wanna, you guys wanna talk about this a little bit, or do you wanna just move on?
So one and two, like, they're pretty similar, but I do like group ones, like maximize, instead of just give.
Well, can we put, can we put, I mean, not that ours is any better, but if we put
We can combine them.
To maximize their highest potential. Instead of on ours, to reach their highest, can we just put maximize there? I mean...
Yeah. Yep, so give students an education that allows them to maximize their highest potential.
For life.
For life, yeah, kinda combine them together.
Okay, hang on a sec.
Or in life?
In life would be good too.
Well, we're, we're kicking you guys out.
No, but you, but you can say, you could say "all aspects of life" to conclude.
There you go, "all aspects of life."
Oh, here comes Erin. He's maximized their highest potential.
Maximize their potential in life, or, or life, or...
I like that. Give students an education that allows them to maximize their highest potential.
Just their potential. How about "in all aspects of life"?
I like "in all aspects of life."
Yeah.
So give students an education that allows them to maximize their highest potential.
Take out "highest," though.
Just to maximize their potential.
Would probably be the same word.
Yep, maximize their potential in all aspects of life.
I like that. So we did it smack. We combined them in seven.
Alright.
Here, you gotta put "in all" at the end, "in all aspects of life."
Yep, missed that.
Yep.
You like it?
Group three, would you like to weigh in?
We used "in all as," no, we used "in all aspects of life" from theirs in that one.
Yeah.
So they got a piece of it too.
I think Erin's eaten sour grapes. Yeah, this'll be it right here. This is, well, this is kinda what we did at smack. We put everything together, and then we kinda combined them all to make one, and then we were just done. We just did it in that way. It wasn't, cause...
Yep.
Hey, you were there.
So... Yep, we gotta be able to fit it on a wall, some place, and put it on your, on all your, uh, stationery and all that type of stuff.
I like "provide." Gary, can we switch "give" to "provide"? Provide students. Provide students an excellent education that allows them to maximize their potential in all aspects of life. That's, I think that's, I think that's good.
Can you, uh, read it clearer and slower?
Okay. "Provide students an education that allows them to maximize their potential in all aspects of life." I see a lot of heads shaking "yes" around the room.
Alright.
I'm just questioning this. I'm just questioning the "all aspects of life." I like that, but isn't that life? Where we're educating a kid, that life, we can't just pick apart life with a kid.
Can we get rid of "but"? So that allows them in the middle?
Provide students education.
To maximize their potential in all aspects of life?
Provide students education to maximize their potential.
In life?
In life. Shorten it up even more.
And, and so, you know, this is where, that's our mission, which is okay. It's okay, but you may get some pushback at some point. That says, "You're gonna do this, but you didn't." "For my child, you didn't do this," you know?
Or, or what if you said, "To help maximize"?
Or what about that enhances their potential?
Provide students an education that enhances their potential in all aspects of life.
Yes, I like that. I like "enhances." Try that one?
Yep, so provide students an education that enhances their potential in all aspects of life. And here's the thing too, guys, we can do this too, or say we get down to like two or three or four. Gary can send us a link where we can say vote, even though they aren't here, and do it that way.
Yep. I can take all of these, you know, and just put them in, put them in a survey, and then we get your entire team working on it, so...
Correct. Can we?
But not that addressing their aspects one was, did we say that?
No, no.
Yeah, we'll throw that one away, yeah.
So can we do it where we vote on like, say, the bottom two? That, you know, provide students this way, or the provide students, you know?
Yep, we cer, we certainly can. I'll just highlight these in my document and we'll go from there.
We should probably eliminate maximize as though, so do we wanna keep the top three and the bottom one for everybody else that's not here?
We can.
If we're not finalizing it tonight, keep them all.
We can, yeah, we can keep them all.
You know, it's like the bottom one and then the top three.
Well, I can put that, I can put that in there and let everybody know that this is the one that you, that the group, the current group landed on. But here are some of the other ones that were a possibility.
Okay, that'll work.
Okay. Perfect. Let's go to vision.
Alright, um, Jeff, did you guys do your vision? We started it.
You guys need a break at all, or have you already done it? You wanna go through, I can go through a few slides here too.
Okay. Okay. Um, I know group three has theirs, group two has theirs, group one, do you guys need some time?
Um, yeah, we don't have, we started working on it, but we don't have one, right?
The vision is what you'll become. I would say, can we take like ten minutes?
Okay. Let me know when you're done. Alright, here it comes. Okay, can you see this one? Here's the overachievers. This is what they did last time?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so group one, what do you have?
Uh, ensure a relevant education that prepares each and every student for success in life.
Relevant, relevant.
That I can't spell, of course. Relevant, I can't E.
Yeah, there you go, sorry.
Education that prepares, did you say?
Yep, each and every student for success in life.
Okay, and the other group?
Wait, now after each and every, you have to put student?
Student, yep, thank you. I have a little, uh, dyslexia, so, alright.
Okay, we have to provide a safe and welcoming environment that embraces all students and provide an excellent and well-rounded education for all.
Did I get that?
I'm gonna make a little figure saying... I'm old. Provide a safe and welcoming environment that embraces all students and provide...
It'd be "an excellent education." Provide an excellent and well-rounded education. Yeah.
So it's gonna try and do this for us, okay? Alright, discussion.
I like ours. Oh, I see you erring roll in your eyes.
Of course you do.
Okay, well, both of them haven't, there's two that has environment. They've all have education. For the most part. Why?
Said, can we combine them?
Yes.
Oh, absolutely. That's the whole purpose.
That's what we're gonna do right now, is we can pull and choose, and we're, that's what we're gonna do right now, is we're gonna work them together.
Yeah, I feel like in our earlier sessions, we talked a lot about likes this kind of being a more united front with the community and staff, so I like that sentence.
So do I.
But I like kind of the safe and so if we can somehow tie them together.
Provide a safe and welcoming environment, supported by staff, students, family, and the community for sus, which is sustainable for decades to come. Something like that.
Yeah, but we gotta get education, we gotta get more about education in there.
Okay, I think we can leave them together.
Yes.
Perfect.
Huh? Yeah.
To create a viable education supported by...
You know, I, the, the thing I worry about with the word viable is, I don't know, my group is gonna hate me. I'm always like, "What do you all mean by that word?", you know? Cause anything that's kind of like a word out there, it's like, well, what, what's viable to you? Viable that we have ten kids in each class, or viable that we have a, you know, what's viable to us?
To provide a safe and welcoming environment that embraces all students, provide an excellent education, supported by staff, students, families, and the community, which is sustainable for decades to come.
I don't like the "for decades to come."
I agree with you. It seems a little, this should be addressed before decades.
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna create, I'm gonna create something here, and so you guys keep talking, but I'm gonna just do something else here.
Yes, for the foreseeable future.
I usually say five, ten year strategy.
You're the one that wandered over here.
I can't see.
Wow, and Dawn was calling me old. I mean, what if you just start with, what you started with was like, "To provide a safe and welcoming environment that embraces all students and provide excellent education, supported by da-da-da-da-da-da, staff, students, family, and the community."
Okay, "To provide a safe and welcoming environment that embrace, that embraces all students, to provide an excellent and well-rounded education, supported by staff, students, family, and the community."
So I, I really don't think you need the word "provide" or "create" up in the front.
Okay.
Your vision of Leroy Ostrander is a welcoming, sustainable education environment. And then we have that supportive, which you guys liked. Yeah, I like that.
Educational environment?
Yeah, Gary, shouldn't I say "educational"?
Yes, a, absolutely, absolutely, absolutely.
Do you wanna borrow my notebook to hit him? You can. There's extra paper in it.
And instead of environment, you could just say "school" too.
A welcoming, sustainable, educational...
Nah, I don't like, I don't like "education."
I kinda like environment. I like environment.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, it kind of entails everything, not just like within the school. It's, you know, the kids on the football field, or the playground, or the practice field, baseball fields.
Bus. School bus. A welcoming, sustainable, educational environment supported by staff, students, families, and the community, yeah. Do we have any, any desire to have it say anything about the quality of the education, or are we good with that?
That's exactly where my thought was, you know, as far as achievement. We haven't said anything about achievement.
So a welcoming, excellent educational environment? Yeah.
Say that again?
I just put "excellent" in front of "educational." I mean, that wasn't...
A welcoming, sustainable educational environment.
You know, it's some of the, one of the things that we had in, uh, four descriptors, uh, was, if I can go back to that here, let me see if I can get to that one.
Right.
Best in class. Uh, you know, that's overused, but...
Innovative? Not even sufficient. Yeah, we, we have the word "relevant" because we wanna, we wanna be relevant to what the needs are as the future comes, it's along. But I still think we need excellence or something in there. What about innovative? I don't know what it sounds like, 'cause I can't see the, I don't remember what it is. Can we switch back? Quick, Gary?
Yep, going back.
A welcoming, sustainable, ed- educational environment.
What was it? What was it? Innovative education? Educational.
Sustainable, we were talking over here that, that's somewhat important because kind of addresses providing that excellent, well-rounded education with the resources we have available. If we aren't sustainable, we're not gonna be here, you know what I mean?
Yep.
See, in my, in my, to be devil's advocate, I would say, isn't that implied? While we're doing this?
We hope so.
So a welcoming, sustainable, educational environment? So are we welcoming, sustainable, educational environment that provides something with education, supported by the staff, students, families, and community? Cause that hits the environment and the, you know, education itself towards the kids.
Like, I don't know if we wanna touch on something with like innovation or technology, or I, like, the workforce is changing and how people are doing, things are changing, they're using a lot more electronics in the workforce, most warehouse houses are manned with robots. So what, I think in the future, what companies are gonna look for out of their hires, right, when they're hiring new staff, is going to potentially be a different skill set. And it's already starting to evolve, right, like we, I see it every day. Um, so I think that's a, which, relevant, innovative, um, those are all types of things that, like, it's just some fields are changing and changing rapidly with the technology that's out there today.
Not anybody here is, I mean, just so you know, I, I, innovative just means new methods, advanced and original, is what it will, I mean...
So a welcoming, a welcoming, sustainable, educational environment. Something with innovative.
Or do we just want, how about the word student success?
But if we take excellent out and put innovative in its spot?
Are we talking about the education itself, or the educational environment, the building that's encompassing our kids, not what's inside it? That's why I'm trying to figure out how you do everything altogether.
Future two futures.
Some, yeah, I'm not sure how I would say it, but...
Oh, Cass is doodling.
You could ask something at the tail end of that too, a welcoming, sustainable, educational environment, so, so, supported by staff, students, families, and the community, providing X, X, X.
Either your relevant education or innovative ed, yeah, someone...
Do you feel, does everybody feel strongly about keeping sustainable in there? I mean, I know, I just wanna listen to Erin's, does everybody feel like?
It doesn't matter, I just feel if we have a better word.
Okay.
And we wouldn't need excellent to that case.
Yeah.
So you, if your vision is student success, or achievement, or whatever other word you wanna use. And we're gonna do it by doing this.
Could you then switch excellent out for relevant education, because it's, as you said, it's changing all the time, you know? So what we teach today and, uh, ag might change next year, or...
We have too many describing words there, you know, like in a row. Achieve student success through a welcoming and relevant educational environment, supported by staff, students, well, we got rid of the word sustainable. I'm kinda, yeah, I'm kinda starting to turn on that word a little bit now.
Holy crap, you're right, small.
Student success through a welcoming, and relevant educational environment.
What if you?
Can you read it?
Well, okay, can we take a sustainable but continuous?
I can't write any bigger, I'm sorry.
Okay, Cass, her, provide an educational environment, sustainable and welcoming by families, staff, students, within our community.
You know, you know, one thing that you could do also is you know, is, is looking at just deleting welcoming and sustainable. And that's gonna shorten it up and make it more of a, a catchphrase that you can repeat a lot quicker. You are missing some things. You know, welcoming is a big deal that you guys have been talking about. Being sustainable is also a huge deal that we've been talking about. But do we necessarily need to have it in the vision?
You just, you just wait for my next one, my next one to read here.
Success through...
Welcoming and sustainable, well, when you have the word supported by staff, students, family, and community. Welcoming and, yeah.
So achieve student success through, I can't, I like the word welcoming, I hate sustainable now.
I, I like student success as the beginning of the statement, cause really, that's it, right? Student success, and how are we gonna do that?
Through relevant educational, through, and, through a relevant educational environment, supported by staff, students, and the community? Environment.
Achieve student success through a welcoming and relevant educational environment, supported by staff, students, family, and the community.
But then like Kyle said, welcoming and putting that all the support at the end kinda doubles it up again.
Yeah, I know.
Well, I mean, isn't welcome and supported sort of a
student success.
Student success through a, through private education.
You could, yeah, get rid of staff, students, families, and communities, longer than we're together.
Well, can we say just supported by the district and community?
Or just all?
I really like, I like to have the-
Anybody and everybody.
Yeah, I like it.
I like the words because we're identifying the students, the family support, the, you know?
Cause we are embracing all.
But then we'll have education in their educational, in their lives.
Provide an educational environment. You, you wanna keep suitable and welcoming?
Through a welcoming, educational, what if we get rid of sustainable and relevant? A student's success, or achieving or whatever, student's success through a welcoming, educational environment, supported by staff, students, family, and the community?
We have to have something about the quality of the education, I think. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, I'm just, I'm trying to think of a word here.
Obviously, it's gonna be educational, but we want it to be good, excellent.
Well, maybe we just take out welcome, sustainable, and relevant and put in excellent instead.
Through an excellent, and, yeah.
Yeah?
It shortens it up a lot, makes it a lot more repeatable.
I think there's a better word than excellent. What is it, excellent? Student success.
Which would be and, like, Gary, it's from excellent.
We need an and by eight, yeah, there we go. Student success through an excellent educational environment. Oh, Carrie's pulling up, oh, we got a girl for us.
How about if we put most excellent, isn't that a Canadian deal?
Here's a list of them that means excellent, accomplished, admirable, admirable, attractive, distinguished, exceptional, exemplary, exquisite, fine, first-rate, good, great, magnificent, outstanding, skillful, sterling, superb, superb, superlative, capital, certified.
Exceptional.
I like exceptional.
I did too, I liked exceptional too, so student success through an exceptional educational environment, supported by staff, students, family, and the community? You know what, go home. Both of you.
Is there any tension around here anywhere?
I like that.
Maybe a little more strongly. Student success through an exceptional educational environment, supported by...
Exceptional, exceptional. It just sounds funny. Do we need the all, student success through an exceptional education environment?
Yeah, I do.
Exceptional educational.
Can we throw verb in front of the? Create student success through an exceptional.
Students' success.
You could say exceptional education and drop environment, and supported by staff, students.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like, I think that might be okay too. Student success through
An exceptional education?
Through, ex, not and anymore, but student success through exceptional education.
Supported by, that's I like that.
Yep, yeah, that's better.
Thank you, got it, guys.
If we keep going, we'd be down to about three words.
Hey, that's what Kingsland did, it says Kingsland, and then a word, a word, a word, and that's all Kingsland has on theirs. It's short and sweet with three words.
Let's just replace it with Erin for president.
Yeah.
I think it, it does. The shorter is gonna give it more punch, and so, I like it.
I like that one.
Okay. So we'll send this out in a, in a survey that you can, uh, a poll that you can vote on. And we wanna make sure, I'm gonna need everybody's email address, type of a deal, we want everybody uh, to make sure that they have some input on it, that are, even though it was missing tonight. And then, uh, for our meeting next week, we are going to start looking at, let me pull that up.
Gary, I'll send you everyone's emails.
Okay, thank you. Where am I at here?
Uh, we are for next Wednesday at four o'clock.
Okay, so just, you know, we, what we're gonna start getting into now is really an action plan. You know, what we're, you know, we have a vision, we have a mission, so we, we defined all these things that we believe in. So this is, you know, it's another quirky thing, but it says it well. Vision without action is a dream, action without vision is aimless. A vision without a plan is just a dream, and a plan without a vision is just a to-do list. But a vision with an action plan can get you going in, in some method. You know, can change things. So Jen and her staff are gonna start working on some of the goals and objectives that can fit some of the focus areas that we've been looking into, and also support, um, the mission and vision that we brought up now, tonight. I'll get this stuff typed up and out to you guys, um. But then while I start having this discussion at our next meeting, has to really pulling everything together. Alright, so that's what we're doing, and I got ten minutes until I have to get to my next meeting, so...
Thank you.
Are you good?
Yeah.
Alright, I'll stop sharing just to make sure I can see everybody's smiley faces one more time. Alright, well, thanks a lot, and Cassidy, make sure you put on some pants before you go outside. Alright, it sounds good, guys, good being with you again.
Thank you, Gary.
Yeah, good night.
I don't think that one should be posted. I think he's still recording you right now, it's easier than that one. Alright, so we are scheduled to meet again next Wednesday at four o'clock. Um, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Okay, I got a motion by Dave, second by Deb, any discussion, all in favor? Any opposed? Non-motion carries, meeting adjourned at five twenty-one PM.